All to order, the select board meeting of Monday, August 18th. And to begin, I will ask us to rise, pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call to mind the soldiers who are fighting for our freedoms today, yesterday, on the home front and away. Thank you. All right, we are all present, so we'll be doing a, no need for a roll count tonight. Our first order of business is the Affordable Housing Trust meeting. Is there anyone?
Yes, Chris is here. This is technically a separate.
I don't.
So you'll have to open the meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust.
All right, I would like to open the meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, here we go. Welcome, Mr. Vitale.
Good evening, Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. So I was before the trust a couple of months ago to discuss a RFP for consultant services to help us with our home buyer assistance program. The town successfully advertised the RFP. We did receive one response back. It was the firm we previously used the last time the program was open, so Leonardo Ray Architects. You met our qualifications that we had put out there and would like to partner with us again. So in your packet, you have a contract which was issued at the time that we did the RFP. You know, but this is more or less finalized with his details in there as well as what the cost breakdown would be for his services. So that is $32,500 was what this total proposal would be for. And tonight, just need your approval to sign.
Did anyone on the board have a question for Chris?
Motion to approve.
Do we have any handle on the kind of dollars will be available?
So I believe we have approximately $600,000 in the Affordable Housing Trust budget. Now, this proposal will be for $32,500, so we have ample funding to take on these services. You know, I think as we go through the process and he evaluates the program, you know, we'll make the determination if additional funds are needed at a future date. But for right now, we're, we have enough funding to move forward.
Thank you.
The consultant firm, they will also be looking at the applications and making the decisions?
Yes. So they'll be responsible for evaluating the program, making sure that the state signs off on it, advertising it, evaluating the proposals, and handling the administrative process with the homeowners at the time of closing.
I think it's money well spent, and I'll second Mr. Nicholson's motion.
Excellent.
It's a good program.
Hearing no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, we will sign off on that, thank you.
Thank you. That's all the business for tonight.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the Affordable Housing Trust meeting has concluded, and now we're on to our new business. Before us, we have a letter of support request for House Bill 2432, an act to reduce incidents in death from pancreatic cancer. And I'd like to, oh, there it is. No, I saw him.
It's tight, he's wearing a fur.
I know. I'd like to ask, but he walked that way. Brock, to come up to the mic and talk to us about this.
Thank you for having me today. I did reach, wanted to reach out to you recently and ask for your support to draft a letter directed to State Representative John Lawn, the Chairman of the House Committee on Healthcare Financing, in support of House Bill 2432, an act to reduce incidence of death from pancreatic cancer. It, along with its sister bill, Senate Bill 1484, would implement the recommendations of the Special Legislative Commission to Study Pancreatic Cancer, which did me 2018, 2019, produced our recommendations. I was honored to serve as the Chair of that commission, and thus, I worked with the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network of Massachusetts to translate those recommendations into legislation to enact, to advance those, our findings. The bill, as it stands today, has 90 bipartisan, bicameral cosponsors. It was favorably recommended by the Joint Committee on Public Health, and in the past two legislative sessions, it has gone to healthcare financing to die. It's run out of steam in both sessions, at the end of the legislative sessions, like the vast majority of bills. However, this time with 90 cosponsors and a total of 113 identified supporters who are still serving in the legislature, and the fact that they have changed the House rules, well, the rules in the House and Senate to have a much earlier reporting time for, indeed, I testified before the State House at the public hearing for the bill back on June 11th, and already received that favorable recommendation, so the calendar is much earlier than it has been the previous years. To try to break that logjam, I was hoping to reach out to you. Now, the bill would basically do four things. It would provide a coordinated pancreatic cancer prevention screening, education, support programs, establish a permanent 13-member pancreatic cancer advisory council. It shall have the Commissioner of Insurance Survey Health Insurers to ascertain the coverage benefits of genetic testing for pancreatic cancer across health insurance plans, and it shall serve as the Center for Health Information and Analysis, conducting and updating mandated benefit reviews for pancreatic cancer screenings. This, this board has been wonderful the past several years in helping to have raised pancreatic cancer awareness on the third Thursday, for the third Thursday of November of the past few years. Thank you so much for that. It is still the second deadliest form of cancer in the Commonwealth. It is the third deadliest nationwide, projected to become number two by 2030. Over 70% of those with pancreatic cancer will die within the first year of diagnosis. My father lasted six months, 12 days. He died, died on March 30th, 2014. And the bill itself is supported by the local, the state affiliate of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, of which I'm a member, as well as the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, which does consider it priority legislation for this session, and new this year, it has also been endorsed by the Massachusetts Caucus of Women Legislators. This year alone, there will be 1,490 new cases of pancreatic cancer in the Commonwealth and 1,170 deaths. The survivor rate over five years is merely 13%, the lowest of any major cancer, and that rate has stagnated over the past couple of years. The most common form of pancreatic cancer, adenocarcinoma, has a survival rate of only 8%. So this is why we, we, as a state, as a nation, focus on many forms of cancer, and I don't want to belittle or turn attention from any single one of them, but this is particularly a cruel and lethal cancer. You know, my father was a town resident here for over 40 years, the vast majority of his adult life, a town meeting member. And also, at the State House, it's, it's an interesting time. There is, as you may recall, the now late state rep, Representative Overton passed away from pancreatic cancer just a couple of months ago. Another sitting state representative currently is battling pancreatic cancer. And several legislators have come up to me and told me their family stories and their personal connections. So I think now is the time to really act on this. You know, I, I joke, I'm not an expert. My degrees are in history, not medicine, so I'm a little out of, out of my depths here. But I also like to joke that, you know, while, while my qualification is my family experience, and, you know, I'm taking this opportunity to perhaps channel something. I joke that I'm channeling my, well, autism, OCD, and anxiety, a little more constructively, trying to advocate for this. And when I, I talk to my doctors sometimes about this, and he said, my biggest problem is I can't make them care. I can't make the state representatives, senators care. I can get cosponsored, but I can't break that lockjam. But I believe this board cares, and if together, we, whether it be Dartmouth, be the star, maybe there's more municipalities would, would sign all the similar letters. And maybe I can't make them care, but we can make them take notice and be aware, and stand up and deliver. And it's not going to do anything for me. I mean, I'm being tested for pancreatic cancer regularly due to the family history and, and recent medical scans. My dad's not going to come back from this, and, but it is there for those who were diagnosed yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And so I think it's vitally important that this town, which is my hometown, I've lived here my entire 47 years, my father, like I said, spent most of his adult life here. It'll be, I think it would be appropriate for the fight to begin here, and hopefully spread across the Commonwealth, to discharge this legislation, so that by the end of the, of the legislative session in 2026, we're celebrating that final victory. And so I just thank you for your time and opportunity to address you.
Well, thank you, Brock. And certainly, Massachusetts prides itself in being a medical research capital, so if anyone should do it, it should be us. I want to thank you, we have, oh, Mr. Talavon.
Brock, I salute the mission you have. There's no better way to honor your father than doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do other, any other cancers of any kind have this kind of coverage already passed to the House, or is this the first time for a type of cancer?
There are, the State House does focus heavily on breast cancer, lung cancer, prostate cancer. It really, and it's, and it's kind of awkward, I've always found, even with the American Cancer Society, they focus also on the big three or the big five. But lung cancer is the deadliest cancer in the United States, but it's mostly off of the sheer volume. The survivability rate has increased tremendously in recent years. Naturally, the second deadliest is colorectal cancer, which again, has a rather high survivability rate in comparison, especially with, you can, you can have a colonoscopy to try to, and you can have mammograms for breast cancer. There is no diagnostic test for pancreatic cancer. And the breast cancer, for example, is the fourth deadliest cancer, and that gets, as well deserved, gets lots of attention. But pancreatic cancer, being the third deadliest nationwide and the second deadliest Commonwealth, gets overshadowed horribly. And so that's why I think that this is particularly important, and my original commission was actually patented after the Ovarian Cancer Commission that successfully was established. So this is nothing out of the ordinary. It's really just calling attention and marshaling the state resources that are already being directed at other forms of cancer, to make sure that this cancer, which is so deadly right here, gets the attention that it deserves.
So you, you're modeling your approach through the ovarian cancer model?
Yes, that was my inspiration back around 2005, 2006, when I first began.
Are there any other cues that you could take advantage of at the State House that may, may be more successful to help you out to get it done? That's just a question.
Well, right now, we have a great team with State Representative Carmine Gentile, who himself lost his parents to pancreatic cancer, State Representative Hannah Kane, who's instrumental on public health and healthcare financing, State Senator Joe Commerford, who is also very influential on, in healthcare matters, and our own Representative Chris Markey and Senator Mark Matig, have been strong supporters. The, the delegation around here has been almost unanimous in their, in their public endorsement, and even those who, for whatever reason, for perhaps their office cannot endorse, cosponsor publicly, have given me their vigorous support. It's really trying to create that critical mass with the chairs of healthcare financing to prioritize this legislation, because there's so many bills, and it's such a, and thankfully, this legislation has little to no economic impact on the state, but it has the potential to have a great benefit for those, for those fighting cancer, but also for saving money for the Commonwealth and the insurance companies. So this should be, to me, a no-brainer that should have passed two sessions ago. But there's such a, but the attention, to try to get their attention, this is why I thought, and actually, it was, I was inspired by one of your own board members to follow this approach. And so I, I've already reached out to all 351 cities and towns, and did that a while back, and Dartmouth was the first to literally put me on the agenda, and I'm having similar conversations, for example, with other cities nearby. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to, this, I'm trying to start a new front that we, I've, we've been working with the legislators intensely, but I'm trying to cast that bigger net of support to try to create that critical mass with healthcare financing.
It's a, it's an honor and a privilege to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Stand before.
Yeah, we do care, like, honestly, and you know we do.
I do.
Board has always, always supported, supported you from, from the very beginning, in, in your dad's honor. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to sign the letter of support request for House, House Bill 2432.
Second.
All right, any other further discussion? Mr. O'Neil?
No, just thank you, Brock, for your leadership.
Thank you.
Sean?
Brock knows where I stand.
I always appreciate it, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
We're signing the letter as we?
Thank you, I greatly appreciate the support, and I'm hoping this is the first building block to, that, again, building that critical mass, so that we can get this done. So again, I appreciate it so much, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brock.
Thank you.
Good luck, Brock.
All right, next on our agenda is a request to construct signage in the right-of-way, 461 and 491, Fons Corner Road.
Thank you. Yeah, more and more, yeah. Yeah. Right.
Hello. Good evening. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major Associates, Principal Business Address at 10 Main Street in Lakeville. I'm here requesting a license to construct two signs within the right-of-way along Fons Corner Road, on behalf of Pascomanceet Land Company. Just as a quick clarification, the, the corrected addresses are actually 461 and 493. I know there was one typo on the agenda, I just want to make sure that's.
493, you said?
Yes, yes, 461 and 493.
Okay.
The purpose for the request is that we have a unique situation on these two parcels of land. I've brought the plans to my right, oh, excuse me, to my left. Several years ago, MassDOT did a land-taking across the frontage of this property, which injected the property line deeper into the property by about 30 feet. Were it not for that, we would have the opportunity to construct two signs on private land, meeting all of the setbacks within the town of Dartmouth. But in this case, because of the depth of the property line adjustment by the taking, those signs, in order to have, to be fully in board of the property line, would be very deep off of the, the right-of-way, the traveled way. The first plan to my left, the red line, is the original line of the property prior to the MassDOT taking, and the blue line is the actual property line as it exists today. Clearly, it's approximately 30 feet in board. What we're asking the board's permission on is to construct a sign that is most effective to be located alongside of the traveled way, which the traveled way of Fons Corner Road is generally adjacent to the red line, it does not move inward, it is simply a property rights issue. We would like to construct a sign that's five feet off of the former property line in this location. We have also worked with Mr. Barber in DPW, as there is a water line that traverses in front of these two properties, to ensure that we can provide adequate clearance for both signs of at least 10 feet offset from that water line. Should the town need to perform any maintenance, they're not doing it, these signs, these signs will not interfere in their ability to do that. So both properties basically echo the same hardship concern. Here is one, again, the red with the blue, and then just flipping to the other property on the south side of the driveway. We have, again, that same condition, the red is the former taking, is the former right-of-way line of MassDOT for the state highway layout, and the blue is the property as it exists today, and we are asking for those signs to unfortunately be in, in the layout line. And we need the board's approval in order to construct them. As, on the plans that hopefully the board has, I didn't mention, but just to bring it up, the shaded area does represent that we have assessed site distances for both of those signs, to make sure that there are no visual obstructions for safe maneuvers of vehicles entering or exiting the site, or traveling along Fons Corner Road with the positioning of these signs. So that engineering calculation is, is on the plans provided to the board.
I'll start with a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have, of course, much smaller here, in front of me. One of the proposed signage is on the corner property of the medical, the marijuana facility, correct? The cannabis, solar cannabis? So it's sort of within their grassed area?
This is the cannabis facility here, and the sign would be located in the grassed area out in front of that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the other sign is located in the sort of median of that road that goes back to Fallon Health?
No, not.
Where is that?
I apologize for interrupting, Madam Chair. Not, not in the median. The other sign on the south side of the driveway is also in the grass strip, south of the, the access driveway to the office building, here. And I'm happy to provide, if it, if it benefits any member of the board, maybe they're not bigger than on your computer screen, I do have some handouts depicting these same plans if they're of any benefit to the board members.
Thank you for the clarification. I now see the proposed signage. I was looking at the darkened gray panel that you have.
Oh.
Do you see, yeah.
This, that, that's the.
Now I can see the.
Yes, ma'am. That's the depiction of a passenger car, to make sure we've done the site calculations in accordance with the State Highway Transportation Official Guidelines.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr.?
In the letter sent by Mr. Barnes, it indicates, and you have also stated, that you had conversations with Tim Barber. Has, have, has the DPW okayed these locations?
So he, through my conversations with Mr. Barber, he has seen the plans. His request was to make sure that we had that 10 feet clear from the water lines, which we've confirmed with him that we have, and we've met that standard that he gave us.
Okay, 'cause I'll be honest with you, I would be much comfortably approving this if I had something in writing from the DPW. Also, in talking with the line of sight, have you contacted the safety officer and shown him the locations of the signs and versus, you know, vision, line of vision of vehicles, not so much going into the property, but coming out of the property, looking north and south as they exit the properties?
So the, the second question first, so the site distances are based on the vehicles coming out of the property and entering into the thoroughfare street, which in this case is Fons Corner Road. So they are based on that. No, I've not spoken with the officer, I've not reviewed that information with them. We've done this based on, you know, standard engineering calculations, would be fairly confident in his agreement with that. In terms of the first question, I understand your concerns relative to Mr. Barber. If, if I may, I'm certainly not taking up his, his position, but through my conversation with him, is that he is not the approver of the sign. So his, his opinion likely would not get written, because he doesn't want to denote that he is approving of those signs. He's deferring that to this board.
Well, I mean, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a traffic guy, I'm, you know, I base my decision on staff recommendations. And unless I have, unless I have an opinion by Mr. Barber that these locations won't interfere with the operations of the water main, and that there is, then I'm not readily ready to approve them. You know, I would like to have that in hand, and we can ask him for that, and we can take it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
You know, and maybe during that time, maybe a quick conversation with this traffic safety officer, showing him the actual, you know, the actual details of, of the egress from those properties, fit with the codes that you had said, you know, something from him would also make me feel a lot more comfortable, because the last thing I want to do is approve something, and then sometime down the line, somebody's coming out of the property and they get, you know, T-boned, because they couldn't see.
Sure. We, we want it to be safe as well.
Mr. Nicholson?
Thank you. So I might be wrong, but didn't, didn't we look at this project last year?
No.
Apply for the same sign change?
This, this was, this was brought before the board.
Right.
But we had no, other than the letter, other than what was said to us, you know, we didn't, we didn't take any action.
All right, so, so is anything significantly changed since the last time we looked at the same plan?
So other than, than my coordination with Mr. Barber on the positioning of these signs and making sure they meet those standards that I, that I referenced, that was our work to develop these plans.
So it's basically the same plan?
It is, it is by and large the, the same plan, but again, we wanted to make sure that we met, met all of those clearances. Where we got sort of logjammed was confirming with Mr. Barber that he was in agreement with these plans. There was a long delay in that taking place. I have spoken with him, this is maybe a month or so ago now, where he referred, he, he spoke to me in the manner that I just recounted to you, sir, which is what he is approving, is that we met those clearances, and now seek that approval of the board, because he can't offer that, that license.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Talavon?
Yeah, I share the same concern, but one of the possibilities is that we could possibly approve this based on. based on written, written confirmation from Mr. Barber and from the safety officer that it does, they confirm the support of the project. The only, only other question I have is, is this precedent-setting at all in terms of, or is this a very peculiar incident where it doesn't come up often, therefore, we can rule it on a case-by-case basis? I don't know if you can answer that question.
I personally do wonder if this is precedent-setting because they're not asking, although those two raffi knolls are on the land of other businesses, they're not getting land from those businesses. They're taking the land which is actually on public property, Dartmouth property.
It is, yeah.
So my concern is for, with anyone else who does not have frontage on the main thoroughfare and then putting their sign up on their property is, are we opening ourselves up to looking at other folks who build off the main road for looking for similar opportunities for signage?
Need an opinion of some kind. Who do we get that from?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to recall 15 years' worth of experience, and I don't recall a sign ever coming before the board. But if I remember correctly, when Mr. Miller was on, serving on this board, there was something similar to this that came up as, as, you know, a one-off. And I think, I think the situation here is a little bit different. Because when the properties were first built, the state didn't come along and take a portion of, you know, of, of the right-of-way as they have done now. This is part and parcel because of what's, what eventually the state is going to look to do for Fons Corner Road completely, all the way to O'Fall River Road. So I, I think this is kind of a little bit of a unique situation. But as I stated before, you know, I like to have the, you know, the opinion of our department heads, you know, in hand. So I would feel more comfortable with that. So I'm, and I'm, to be honest with you, I'm surprised we don't have it. Because this is something that this board has always asked of any of the department heads that if they, you know, if something's coming up before us, at least let us, give us some information, give us your opinion on the matter, you know, so that our decision is based upon, you know, fact and, and not just, you know, the whim of whatever.
Trust but verify, as they say.
Yes, exactly. You know, and that's, and that's the important thing, you know. Like I said, I would feel very much comfortable knowing that, you know, Mr. Barber's, you know, said that the discussion that they've had with engineers and whatnot, that, you know, it will be in writing that if something happens, the town will be able to access the property to take care of the water main. And something from the safety, you know, safety officer saying that, you know, the line of sight as egress out of the properties fall within the parameters of whatever guidelines, state guidelines or whatever, I would feel much more comfortable with that.
So I, I can, I can certainly pursue both of those as you've suggested, to have something on, on record for the board. I guess I would just, again, if Mr. Barber has reluctance on writing something, you know, that is sense of an approval.
How about town administrator? Talk to Mr. Barber.
We could figure that part out.
I did send Mr. Barber, and he provided me with an email just the other day. And he, he was hesitant to provide his opinion on the location other than as long as it was 10 feet from the water main, he was fine with it.
I'm sorry, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Town Administrator. He's a department head. He provides an opinion. We're asking his opinion.
We could certainly ask him, but I think his thought was it's, it's out of his purview.
I want his opinion.
You can ask for it again.
I want his opinion in writing.
We can also invite him to the next meeting.
But I want his opinion in writing. I, I mean, that's, I'm sorry. You know, this is what, this is what you signed up for. You know, if I have a question on something to do with the roadways and I want to have an opinion, I would like to have that opinion. And not just an email saying, okay. Or a conversation with somebody who's actually proposing something, you know. Not to say, you know.
Right.
You know, I'm sorry.
I also think.
I'm collateral damage. We, we understand, I understand what you're suggesting. Obviously, the administrator has the email, so our stories are concurrent. We're singing from the same hymn book, but I hear you.
And our traffic safety officer is Steve Canario.
And I do think that would be something to talk to Steve about because, in general, the traffic on Fons Corner Road going out to Hawthorne Medical and now seems sadly.
It's increased.
I've reached an age where I'm there weekly.
It's increased. I mean, anybody coming out of Ventura Boulevard basically has to sit 10, five to 10 minutes trying to get out.
Yeah.
So.
So.
Mr. O'Neill?
So to answer Mr. Nicholson's question, yes. This was before us in another meeting. I believe it was back in February of 2025. February?
Yeah.
I had the, the director of the DPW here and asked him for his opinion, either yea or nay, so we could move on. We've got, you know, another eight months and, six months. And we have an email that says basically if it's within that 10 feet, outside of the 10 feet from the water main, then he's okay with it. You know, this is about, you know, this is a very unique situation. And my question would be to Phil, you, you've done a lot of work out on Fons Corner Road. Have you seen this particular situation? Any other parcels with this particular issue with the taking?
So not in this particular location. I, I've done work with the state attorney, state attorney general's office relative to eminent domain takings and what is perceived as the fair market value for those takings. And that market is based on the loss of something that that property would otherwise been able to take enjoyment of. In this case, it would be signage, access, buildability, lot coverages. So it meets that standard definition of hardship, you know, because it was an issue outside of the control of the property owner that actually caused the situation to be. Were it not for this to have occurred, the result would have been fully compliant and buildable. So, so I've, I've encountered that many times in my career, not directly adjacent to this parcel on either side, of course, in terms of the Fons Corner right-of-way. But, but yes, in other points.
And the, the particular signs that you have here, how far off of the sidewalks would they be?
So we, we have them five feet back, which is what the code allows, allows for. So obviously, they're off the former right-of-way line, that five feet where there is a sidewalk. They're off to the back of the sidewalk as well.
And if I recall, the signs directly across the street are probably two feet off of the sidewalks.
I don't know the answer.
I don't expect you to, to know that. And if you take a ride down Fons Corner Road, you'll notice that, and I don't recall seeing, because of the taking, such a difference between the parcel and the right-of-way other than this particular area, which encompasses not just these two lots, but also a little bit further down, down the line.
What, what's unique about these two parcels is you, the red line versus the blue, they actually converge back together on the south and on the north side of it. You know, so the idea of a future expansion plan through the entirety of the corridor, they, the state would run out of right-of-way through that corridor. So we're not really sure what the intention is.
So you've got a bit of a triangle there.
A bit of a trapezoidal shape where they, where it juts in on these two parcels and then connects back out.
Okay. Typical Dartmouth. And this is, this is more, and again, I filed a 268A, 23B on this one because I, I actually insure two, two of those buildings out there. But I don't insure Edward Jones, South Coast Financial, Ascent Audiology, Advanced Dental, Fallon Medical. And right now, the way that I look at it is we're cleaning up that area pretty well by having those particular signs, which I would assume are pretty expensive, to have those out there for the benefit of these tenants. So the fact that we, we have an email from Mr. Barber saying that as long as we're 10 feet away from that main, he would be okay with it. I understand Mr. McDonald's issue with, with getting something and writing from him. I would ask the board to make a motion that we approve, you know, authorize a conditional approval through the chair for, for the approval of this and wait for the letter from Mr. Barber, which would basically seal it. I mean, the only reason I, I suggest this is because, you know, we're going to have to have another bill paid now to have Mr. Cordero come back to yet another meeting. And this has been going on since February, well, at least February. I, I want to say it was probably November even prior to that. So, you know, it was a lot of time and energy and money here. And there are tenants that have been requesting, making this request for quite a while. So that's a motion I'm making.
Before we vote on that, I have a question to ask. Mrs. Brooks, okay?
Yes, go ahead.
So Mrs. Brooks brought something up regarding setting a precedent for this. I'm okay with this project the way it is at this point. And given the fact that if the DPW director's in favor and, and also the, the traffic study is, is in favor of it, the police study, the only thing I would ask is, why don't we get our town attorney to make sure there is no precedent being set? If that's the case, then I'd vote for it.
Okay.
I got a comment on that.
Oh, all right, Dave.
Is that, is he a town attorney? The, the correct person to give us that answer?
I did reach out to Attorney Savastano regarding this. And our team did a thorough review. We could only find one other example of when this has been allowed in the past. We didn't have the address, but it was a 911 compliance issue is when it was allowed. And Attorney Savastano's response ultimately was, you know, he preferred that the board decide whether it was something to entertain or not first before he spends significant time reviewing. And so if you were to approve tonight, I'd recommend that you just make it conditional upon any other approvals, such as zoning. There could be some zoning implications.
I just had one other comment, Ms. Brooks.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to make Mr. O'Neill's point, too. I'm, I'm well aware of the, the people in those offices, they're facing backwards. They're deeply in need of a sign. And I think they waited long enough for that. However, I would support these conditional issues as well because I think they're important, all three. But if we can get that as part of our approval and we can move it along a little faster as long as we get those, if we don't get those approvals or don't get satisfied, then that's a different story. So I would go along with, I second the motion, Mr. O'Neill.
Okay, motion made by Mr. O'Neill, which includes a conditional approval. Looking for more information from DPW, the police department, zoning, and the attorney?
That wasn't his opinion, that wasn't his motion?
That wasn't his motion. Mr. O'Neill, would you state the conditional?
The town attorney, right?
Right, but that wasn't his motion. That's what we're trying to say. So your original motion was?
It's a conditional approval.
Conditional approval of the issuance of the license. Conditional, the one condition that I had stated was a note from the DPW director allowing the placement. Or at least, at least acknowledging the fact that it is within the, outside the 10 feet of the main. And then if you, and legal, you know, and legal. So, so it would be the DPW and legal. Yeah, we can, we can talk to Steve, but it, it's an engineering standard. It's, that's not going to be an issue. You can still talk to him. So I, I would, I would make it conditional on the response from DPW and legal.
And legal?
Yeah.
Okay. Second that?
Second, you have a second here.
A second.
So DPW?
Both locations, yes.
DPW and legal.
And police, as far as sight view?
Well, Chris did not include that in his motion because he felt that the engineer would have taken that into consideration. So we can vote first on this motion. And if this motion passes it so, otherwise we, if it fails, we could add other conditions.
I'll amend, I'll amend the motion, then. I have no problem doing that.
All right, amending the motion.
Okay, amend the motion to include DPW, the legal, and the safety officer. Response from all three.
Okay, that's enough.
I'll second that.
You second that? All right, now.
Any discussion?
Any discussion on that?
Well, once we get the, the information from all three, it will come before this board for a final?
Approval. Which my hope would be that we can get this by our next meeting, which is September 8th.
Yeah, it's three weeks.
That, that would require another vote, right? So conditional approval would be held by the chair or the administrator, receiving that information. If that information is received, then it's approved. And we get the license taken.
The whole idea of the motion is that we don't have to have a second meeting. It's conditional approval.
We can still bring it back, you know, just.
On the 8th, we would announce where it is. On the 8th, we would announce where it is.
Yep. If the conditions are met and we vote, we vote in favor and they're met, then.
You don't care about that, Cody?
That's good. Good with me.
And that was the whole idea of the motion, as far as I saw it. Right, Ms. O'Neill?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
And I am.
I like to have it in hand, so.
I am as well, but it passes three to two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Talk about $100 billion budget.
All right, next on our list is a conservation restriction from Mary Leggs Farm. So Matt Mark?
Hey, everybody.
Is coming up to the mic to talk to us about this.
Thank you, Mark Rasmussen, Buzzards Bay Coalition. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to gain your endorsement of a conservation restriction on the Mary Leggs Farm, which is 607 Elm Street in Payden Arum. This farm, 10 acre farm, has been in the Owens family since 1895, and the current generation has decided to permanently preserve the 10 acres that is left of it. I'm sure many of you know the property, it's heavily used right now, it's the site of Flying Carrot Farm, both their farm stand and their community-supported agriculture program, flowers, vegetables, eggs, a lively, active farm right there in the village of Payden Arum. We're involved because it's a, as a piece of land, this 10 acres is mapped as statewide importance for farmland, so important farm soils in this property, and notably a very large property on an unnamed stream to Ponigent Bay. So right by the farm flows a stream, so important for water quality and farming here in town. The conservation restriction is, supports all farming activity, but allows no future building. This will be the end of building on the site. Most notably, I think about how this deal came together, all the funding for the acquisition of the conservation restriction will come from the federal USDA agricultural land easement program. This is the same program we used last year to protect Jordan Farm, Tavarus Farm on Slade's Corner Road, the Weiner Farm on Horse Neck Road, a lot of good use in Dartmouth, and I hope a lot more. This is a program that Buzzards Bay Coalition has been certified by USDA to help farmers attract. And in this case, the Owens family is selling this conservation restriction for $1.8 million, and that is entirely federally funded, no town funds involved in this request tonight. And I should, very important to note, that is half the value of the property. They are making a wonderful generous donation of half the value of the land in order to see it conserved. So that's the request. Have any questions? I have the actual document for the town administrator to sign if you need a copy. Good.
Does this include all four lots that's on the map?
Yes, the whole front 10 acres. You remember, a few years ago, they sold back the seven lot, does not include that, obviously that's been built, it's the remaining 10.
All right, so it's.
The house, the house is not part of it.
All right, so that's Lot 1.
Yep, that's the only piece that's excluded.
All right, so then it's just a large portion, it's not the other, the other two portions on the?
No, no.
If you look at the one that's in red, page 77?
It would be, so here's the, here's the lot, so this, it's this lot, correct?
You got it.
It's not these two.
77.
It's not.
It's a big piece of property.
For that neighborhood, it's a very big piece of property.
Beautiful, yeah.
Yeah, it is. And it's very heavily, lots of stuff growing on it, lots of vegetable plots and a lot of activity.
Yeah, it's lovely.
Mr. Townebaum?
Mark, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Two-part question. The USDA program, you mentioned three or four other farms. What's the, what's the current history and how are they doing as a, and maybe it's an unfair question, but as a farm in their operation, and what's the future of this farm in terms of its going-forward ability to operate?
I should have mentioned, so Flying Carrot Farm has a lease on the property from the Owens family, they will stay there and continue to operate their farm stand and CSA, so a lot of active agriculture.
They're doing well.
Yes, yep. Sure, and the others, Grass-fed Beef on Jordan Farm, Flower, the Russell Mills Flower Company on the Weiner Farm, Arboretis on the Tavarus Farm, these are all active agricultural properties.
The investment in trying to keep a farm is working.
It is.
Great, thanks, Mark.
Now, the Fine Acquisition.
Flying Carrot is not currently farming the entire parcel, though, correct?
Most of the, what you see in that, if you look at the aerial photo, you see all of their farm plots. There are some other paddocks, remember, this was a horse farm that everybody remembers, it was sort of a famous in-town horse farm. Some of those horse paddocks are still there, but if you look at the air photo, all those plots are vegetables or flying carrot.
There's a secretariat going through there.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. McDonnell and seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
I am not voting because I am a neighbor.
Okay.
I am pictured in the, I'm on that screen, so I will not vote, but thank you very much.
I see you down there in the green.
It's right there.
I see you waiting.
Yeah, you can see me, I'm in the weeds. Thank you very much.
Those carrots.
Thank you all. And I would just love to say, tonight with me, Natasha Sawaby is a new land protection staff with Buzzards Bay Coalition, so in the future you may see Natasha, so I just wanted to introduce her.
All right, Natasha.
One more, one more question.
Back and back and back.
Question, Mark.
You made mention that you're not at capacity yet, so you're still looking for deals, you're still, you're still interested, the town of Dartmouth is of interest to you.
Town of Dartmouth's very much of interest to us and to this program, because we've done so many farms here now, the program likes to invest where there's an active farm community. So I thank you for asking the question.
That's important to us, yeah.
We'd like to see more applications.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have a discussion on adoption and implementation of Mass. General Law C-138 12D, a license trade-in for all alcoholic beverages. So Cody, could you explain what that is?
Yeah, this is a local option for the board to adopt if they so choose, and essentially it would allow wine and malt beverage license holders to trade in their license for an all-alcohol license. So it doesn't automatically allow them to do it, but it gives them the option, and then they would have to apply for a change of license before this board and then require ABCC approval. So it just gives them the option to trade that, basically beer and wine license in for an all-alcohol license.
Okay, and the process before is they would have to come?
For a whole new license.
For a whole new license.
So this is just for a change of license, which again would still have to come before the board, but it's not a whole new license.
Anyone with questions on this adoption and implementation of the trade-in for all alcoholic beverages?
Isn't this similar to the situation with Farm &amp; Costrated from beer and wine to all alcohol?
Well, I think it would mean that they would not have had to have come before us to get that change.
They did.
But they did.
Oh, yeah.
Right, no, but this means it wouldn't.
That's what I mean, yeah.
But that also went before town meeting.
Because they needed a new license.
You weren't there. What, sorry? Farm &amp; Costrated, isn't that Farm &amp; Costrated?
No, it's a little different, that's a little different than this.
Similar, I mean, it has.
Not quite.
Well, why is it not similar?
They applied for, they applied for, they went, they're not using this, they applied for the license. So they came in, they came in and they did it the way you're supposed to do it. So my concern with this is the locations, the current locations of the malt, malt and this beer and wine license as compared to, you know, the other locations of all, of the total.
All alcohol.
So, I mean, if you go, if I'm not mistaken, Bliss, Bliss Cor, Bliss Auto, across from Faze?
Oh, Bliss Express, yeah.
They have a beer and wine, and then there's an all-alcoholic Dartmouth mark. So if they were to come to apply, now you would have two licenses of all-alcoholic within 100 yards of each other.
Yeah.
You know? And now you also have a beer and wine license on Route 6 near the Capri.
Correct. Now it becomes a full alcohol.
Like a match, I'm sorry, you know, that's, that's, I have huge concerns about what the going's on at the Capri and that whole corridor, and to put a all-alcoholic license place is just.
Are we doing this because the state changed the rules?
It's just an option, so it's just an option for.
You would have to accept the option.
You accept the option, and it still comes before you for a change, a transfer, but rather than having to apply for a whole new license.
So the state changed the rules and offers an option if we want to take it?
Yep, this option came about as part of the FY26 budget that the governor signed into law.
They're doing it just to make it easier to make a conversion, they don't, and leave it up to the town whether we want to do it or not.
It's basically a transfer rather than a whole new license.
Didn't you have to have the, what do they call, home rule petition in order to add the license in town?
I believe so, previously.
It was like a limit per number of licenses per town, correct?
They leave it to us to choose how we want it to go.
The limit still exists.
Still stands.
Yeah, yeah, this doesn't change the limit.
Okay, it's just a transfer of the license from, if they, if they choose.
If they choose, they can apply for a transfer before the board and ABCC approval rather than applying for a whole new license.
Oh, I'm wondering what that would, what that would mean for them, what would they be subjected to in addition to the requirements for malt?
Who's they, what do you mean by they?
The proponents, the license holder. You know, is there anything in addition to the requirements that they have for their current license to transfer this over?
They would need more insurance.
A lot more.
A lot more.
You know, hours of operation, you know.
Bigger responsibility.
You know, I don't, I don't know, it's interesting.
It's a much bigger responsibility.
I don't know, I, I think that.
I think the idea is that if someone wants to make that conversion, they need to then come to us, and if we decide that it fits, then the process is easier. It doesn't mean, and that's really the change, it seems like, because the other process is complex.
This is just for on-premises, too.
On-premises?
Mm-hmm. Like meaning like a restaurant?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it makes it easier.
On-premise consumption.
So no, no.
Oh, so not like a store?
I don't think it makes it easier because they still have to come and apply. So whether they apply to change a beer and wine, a beer and malt license or versus getting a new license, it's the same.
The easier is because it's a transfer.
Basically same process.
It's easier because it's a transfer as opposed to a whole new license, that's the only.
But it still has to be approved, is what you're saying.
It still has to be approved, just like the regular license.
That's my, that's my point.
So I don't know why, I mean, what the state should fix is that the license stays with the communities and not be sold as a commodity.
As it used to be.
Right. I mean, the license is a privilege.
So this is a place that serves beer and wine, and if they want to serve all alcohol, and if we approve it, then they can make a, we can do a transfer rather than a new license?
Correct, for on-premise, yes.
On-premise.
I think it's very specific on-premise, so the concerns that we had for those two markets, that's not even, they're not even part of it. It's restaurants.
Selling beer and wine or like to sell alcohol.
Right.
And we can decide, right.
So we'll still get the last word.
There's one, there's one example that comes up to me, I won't mention the restaurant name, but they currently have the beer and wine license, and I know that they were interested in doing that, but the state required that they have a bar, that they install a bar in order to sell everything else, all alcoholic beverages, so.
So that doesn't make sense.
Personally, I'd like a little bit more time to try and figure out exactly what the requirements will be on the transfer and on the business in order to get the transfer done.
How about if we get a one paragraph explanation in English that says what we're trying to accomplish here, from somebody?
Yeah.
And it sounds like if you're a restaurant selling beer and wine and you now want to sell alcohol, then you, you have to go through the process, but in the end of the day, if it's approved by this board or whatever, it's just a transfer and not a new license.
Right.
And if that's the case, then we should know that.
So are there any difference? Obviously difference in cost.
Right, is there a difference in cost?
So, Zach, Cody, the pricing, the cost for these licenses will change?
I mean, the hour side of it is still the same, you know, we, it doesn't dictate.
Beer and wine and all alcohol is the same?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I would have to look, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I would, I would think it's higher.
So the question is, do we have thousands of restaurants in town that are serving beer and wine only and they want to go?
It has nothing to do with restaurants. This is retail sales.
No, no, no.
No, this is.
This is only restaurants.
Only restaurants.
See, I thought this was retail sales.
Yeah.
That's what, looks that way to me.
Because in the very first part, it says wine and malt beverage license holders to trade in their license for non-transferable, on-premise, all-alcoholic beverage license.
It basically sounds like a restaurant who wants to move up from beer and wine to all alcohol. And if they do, when we approve it, then the process is easier. And do we want to get a confirmation that is the case of this, that's the purpose of this?
It is, that's exactly the purpose.
The purpose is, yeah, but again, my concern is, what are the requirements going to be on the proponent when they make that transfer?
Do they all have to have a bar?
Right.
I, yeah, I believe they do.
It still has to go to the ABCC, and the ABCC still has to.
Still has to go back there.
Yes, the state still has to approve it, this doesn't take the state out.
They have to comply with laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is the ABCC.
Yeah.
We don't approve any of that stuff, it's their purview, the ABCC.
I don't know, there seems to be a little bit of confusion on it, I'd like a, maybe another meeting to wrap my head around it a little bit before making a vote on it. I can see that, how would we be beneficial to some applicants, but.
Many actual candidates are there out there.
There aren't many, you know, maybe a handful.
But if there are.
Can you get a synopsis on the difference from applying for a new license versus a transfer?
Yeah, like a breakdown, two columns.
Sure, it's a shortcut, maybe probably.
On the original one, these links are not live on ours because we have a PDF, but perhaps in the original one, the links would be helpful.
Sure, we can provide that.
Yeah, I don't know, it may not be.
You can call, you can reach out to Ralph there, Ralph Sacamoni, he can tell us.
All right, so on this matter, we're just holding.
Well, do we want to ask for any clarification?
Yes, we've asked through Cody, Cody's going to get some information.
Oh, I hear that, I'm sorry, thank you. Call up Ralph.
Ralph?
All right, next, more, the cannabis social equity policy update approval, and Mr. Vitale's coming to the mic for that.
Hello again. So it has been a couple of years since the board has seen this policy. The last time that the board had approved this was when it was initially adopted in July 2023. At the time, we adopted it based off the initial guidance from the state with the cannabis reforms that were passed and signed into law. So since that time, the Cannabis Control Commission, the CCC, has expanded their guidance, and now they're at the point where they're going to begin enforcing actions if we don't have a policy that's up to date in compliance with the laws and the guidance that they've come out with. So the policy before you in your packet this evening is updated to comply to the best of our ability with the new CCC regulations. I add the caveat of to the best of our ability because there is vagueness in the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations, which give them more purview to shoot down things or language they don't necessarily like in the policy. However, this policy, we developed it to be in line with ones that have been approved in other communities. It's expanded on the initial policy by really going into more detail on, you know, how are we being open and transparent, you know, what is the application process for these prospective businesses if we had an HGA license available, you know, what's our scoring criteria, and really detailing the resources that are available to them. So we have to go into a lot more detail. I would say from an administrative standpoint, this does not really change how we look at host community, host community licenses. Now, the town has three retail licenses, they're all currently taken, but if we're, if one were to become available, you know, we would go through a request for qualification process just like we did this past time, we would review the proposals that came in, they would come to the board after being evaluated by our team. The key difference in that is this social equity component, basically, we have to give some preferential treatment, you know, within some parameters to certain businesses that meet the state's guidelines. How we have it proposed is essentially there's a six-month exclusive application window for them to apply. If they don't apply, we would put out another request for qualifications and any type of applicant could apply and be graded from that point on. But more information can be found, the policy that you guys have in your packet, I'm happy to answer any specific questions on it, but if we approve it tonight, we have been contacted by the state and they do want a copy of this, so my hope is with the board's approval, we can send this update draft to the state so that we are in full compliance.
What do we have to lose, so we're not getting any more money? The money they promised us, we're not getting any.
Nothing in this policy tonight that addresses that, unfortunately.
So my, my biggest concern was the number of licenses, so this does not affect the number of licenses that we're issuing, and they would have to come before us anyway if one of those licenses came up for sale.
Right.
So if this is to get us in alignment with the state, then I don't have a problem with it.
Did you say all three, the retail licenses are taken up?
Yeah, so we have three host community agreements.
We have two operating, and there's a third?
Say that one more time.
We approved a third one.
Right, that's just pending.
But it has not, nothing happened.
Yeah, so they have not come back before us for changes on that. You know, we have had some informal discussions, but at this point, we consider that an active host community agreement, so.
I know it could be a moot point, but I know we also have three medical licenses available, which has become a moot point, period. Is that, would that something we should consider to affect, that we can move it to retail or just want to leave it alone as it is?
No, we can't move those to retail?
Can't not do it.
No.
Not, not that any, but they're lining up to get it either, but, okay.
Do the same, do the same social equity issues apply to the?
To both.
To both?
To both, I mean, I'll just, from informal conversations I've had amongst other municipalities, most cannabis operators are trying to move from medical into the retail.
Yeah.
Just because that's where the market is.
Who determines a socially verified business?
The Cannabis Control Commission.
Of course they do.
That's my problem.
Of course they do. You want the commission?
Cannabis Control Commission can be bought, and they have been bought, therefore the changes in the rules.
Right.
I don't want to get in trouble with the state, even though I always like to have a good fight, even though I always like to have a good fight.
We should sign.
I'll make a, make a motion that we adopt this, but I'm going to tether that motion saying that I'm not going to approve any more licenses in this town, period, as long as the Cannabis Control Commission exists.
Is that part of the motion?
No, that's his own personal stand.
That's my own personal statement.
So it's been, the motion has been made by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. Any other discussion? So, all in favor of support of this?
The adoption.
The adoption of the social equity policy?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone not in favor? No. Motion carries. So, we will sign this. Thank you, Chris. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
With an asterisk saying, "We're not happy." But nobody cares.
On a lot of counts.
All right, next. Staying right where you are, Mr. Vitale. The, um, updated Board Commissions and Committees Handbook.
Yes. So, last fall, the board adopted its first Select Board Policy Handbook for boards and committees that operate under your purview. You know, we're trying to get it in line with the fiscal year where if we go through this handbook and we look for updates, we want, going forward, to update this on an annual basis with updated contact information, updated guidance that comes out from the state, if there's any, uh, adjustments or amendments to the handbook. Trying to time it to be somewhat consistent. This year, um, we have several updates, um, some substantial. Some things are just minor, uh, content adjustments and corrections. If you, and I'm just trying to find the page number quickly. If you per, turn to page seventeen, uh, Virgin History, this gives you a pretty nice outline of what has changed in the handbook. This year, we've added some new sections. So, we've added a section for code of conduct, conflict of interests. We add a section talking about the process for recusing yourself, um, from an agenda matter. We add a section in talking about public hearings and the public hearing process and how to, uh, run a public hearing. We have also added a new section called administrative activities. So, that section goes into, uh, board responsibilities for producing a town meeting report or an annual town report, um, submitting warrant articles, um, for future, uh, consideration. It goes over, uh, public records requests that boards may receive, the use of town equipment facilities, and the use of town council. So, those weren't in the last edition, um, but after getting some feedback, we added in this year. The other key thing that I had mentioned was the addition of a code of conduct policy. So, this was a last-minute addition, uh, that Cody had sent out. And, um, you know, working with Cody, that was one of the, uh, recommendations for this year's update. So, on page twenty-nine in the appendix, you can see, um, a code of conduct policy, which we developed as a guiding resource for our various boards and commissions. This policy is based off of the Mass Municipal Association's recommended policy for boards and committees. We adjusted it just because, um, we want it to be easily readable for people viewing this handbook, but, um,
Last-minute edition.
You know, it's, uh, a lot of good information in this handbook.
I also know that one of the things we talked about with the handbook was a training. And I know that you've organized that. So, could you just tell everyone?
Absolutely. So, uh, this Wednesday, three o'clock here in the Select Board Meeting Room, we are going to have our, uh, first board and committee training for new and existing members. The training is going to be done in partnership with our town clerk, Sarah Haskell-Ruda. Um, we are going to be going over some of the key sections in this handbook. We're going to be distributing it, assuming it gets passed this evening. And, uh, in addition to that, we'll be answering any questions that our board and committee members may have. So, you know, we do have some new committee members, but there's a lot of good information that even if you're a returning member, um, you know, we encourage you to attend. The other thing I'll make a note of is, even though this handbook is for boards and committees under the purview of the Select Board, you know, we still encourage our other boards and committees to operate in a similar manner to the policies that we have listed here, because the resources are all the same.
I also appreciate having the forms in here, which are interactive. So, anyone on the committee that's responsible for either posting a meeting or, or recording the minutes will have a form that they can use to submit. So, I, I think it might be easier and certainly more uniform.
Yeah. And the one other thing I'll make a note of in the handbook, there was some initial conversation this past year, but, um, the board had expressed interest for some of the committees to having a designated liaison. You know, there is a place in the handbook where we can add that information, you know, if, um, you know, there's a future discussion and, you know, you wanted to designate a point person, we could add that in there as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And my only other thing on this is that I know that in looking at both this document and then online at the boards and committee pages, there are several boards and committees that are still looking for candidates to fill slots. So, people who are out there wondering what they could spend some time doing, there are a number of committees, active committees, that, um, may be in need of, uh, membership. So.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes, Mr. Vitale.
I, I think it's a, not only a great document in, at the additional detail you put in, but also ju, just by having these, um, these class, classes, uh, would, I guess, call them classes?
Training.
Training, thank you. Training.
It, it highlights the fact that people need, they want to know more, and that's where they can find that out. I had one comment on it, um, under the Roberts Rules, it said that they, it, that, I was maybe, uh, didn't realize it, maybe mistaken, but under Roberts Rules, the chair or the vice chair can make a motion or a second motion. I was, under the impression that was not the case, but that's what it says here. Did I read that correctly?
So, unfortunately, I've not referred or viewed, viewed that section in thorough detail. You know, but I think when you're looking at overall meeting management, having a standard guideline like the Roberts Rules is good, especially for new committee members.
They did mention here specifically that the, the, the chair or the vice chair could make a s, a motion or a second motion.
I had asked, um, Attorney Stavastano about that, and he said, in fact, that is true.
Really?
That's the case. I know, none of us ever thought that.
Right. No, I, I.
That, that's what it states here.
Yeah.
Okay. So, a lot of this stuff, is this, most of this stuff gone through a town council or not yet, or?
No. So, this is, um, really policy-based. Um, now, obviously, the, um, laws that we have to pass or abide by, um, are indicated, but it's nothing that would really require town council's involvement.
It's great work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, do you, um?
Go ahead.
Are you sure? I know that the open meeting law violations that we've had in the past were on technicalities when starting a lot of meetings. Do we have standard, um, verbiage for, um, to, to avoid some of the, um, the more basic slip-ups that can happen in some of the meetings?
Yeah, so.
Is it in here somewhere?
So, on the public meeting notices themselves, similar to the Select Board Agenda, um, you know, when you go over the different agenda items, we have a template as to, you know, how should your meeting be structured? So, the call to order, the pledge of allegiance, an announcement of recordings of meetings, and an acknowledgement of members pub, bleh, acknowledgement of members participating remotely. So, that's in the, uh, draft template that we've provided them. So, we don't explicitly say how you convey that information, but, um, you know, our hope is by having that in there, it's.
Yeah.
It should be pretty clear.
It's in here. That, that part of it is in here.
It's in here, yes.
I just can't see it. Okay, good. Thanks.
No problem.
This is a living, breathing document as well, huh?
This is. So, you know, for whatever reason, as we go through, uh, we've read through it many times, but if there's always that, like, one grammar, one spelling issue, this policy does allow the administration to make, um, grammatical, you know, non-substantive changes, just again, because it is a living document. But anything substantial that is a new policy or new opinion by the board, you know, would come back to this board for approval, um, at a future meeting. Like I said, hopefully on an annual cycle.
This is probably the first, uh, of its kind that will not be in printed form. This will be solely accessed through the website.
Yes. So, how we're proposing issuing it is, um, for new members, they will be similar to, um, the conflict of interest statements, the other requirements they have to sign through the town clerk. This will be, uh, added to that list of requirements so that there's an acknowledgement of receipt. They will be available for physical copy, but the idea is, this is a digital version with active links that'll be available on the website. And not to give too much of a spoiler, um, but we're planning on making a dedicated page on the website. So, you know, the copies of these meeting agendas, so you don't have to sit through this whole packet. So, there'll be separate documents with guidance on the website as well.
Great.
So much for the spoiler alert to voice out.
No, sorry. I was going to say that Wednesday, but, you know. I'll let you guys in a little secret early.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Good luck on Wednesday. All right. Next, we have the Budget Advisory Group. Cody, I know that you've spoken to other, um, the other groups involved. How has it been received?
Yeah, it's good. I think there's, uh, an excitement for this, uh, and to really dig in, uh, this fall during the budget season. So, as we prepare for this, uh, we want to get the Select Board representatives for the Budget Advisory Group. There's, um, two, we have two members from this board, two members from the Finance Committee, and two members from the School Committee. And so, the thought tonight was to start the discussion on who the two members would be from the Select Board.
All right. I am certainly interested in, in being a part of it. One, I, I did talk about it, so I don't want to, you know, put work out for someone else. But I do want to know who would like to, uh, be a part of that.
I would, but I had a question as well.
Yes.
Maybe, Cody, you can answer this. Do, do you foresee the possibility that the long-range planning, uh, group could, um, eventually, um, become, become part of this group, so becomes, or you see, you see it as two parallel?
No, I think they're two separate things. You know, one is really focused on long-range capital, you know, planning. And while this group may do some, you know, analysis of capital, the idea is more operational, um, you know, efficiencies, transparency, communication, and that cross-collaboration during the budget process.
Well, thanks. I'd, I'd like to participate if I could.
Was there anyone else?
Well, first of all, I, I, I don't, no, I, I just, my opinion is, is since David is already on the long-range planning, um, I think it would be appropriate to have two other people on the Budget Advisory Group. That way, we have three eyes on the whole thing. So, my suggestion would be, um, the chair and Mr. O'Neil on the Budget, Budget Advisory Group. And I'll make that as a motion.
Okay. Mr. O'Neil, you were, you accept that?
I serve the behest of the chairperson.
Second.
All right. The motion on the floor is to appoint from this board myself and Mr. O'Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay? Dave's okay. All right.
Busy enough.
Can I, can I, I'm not going to segue at this time, though, to talk about long-range capital, because I know you're going to tell us a little bit more.
Okay.
About that. Otherwise, that would have been a good segue. All right, next. Our first glimpse at, um, looks like a very short meeting, uh, in October.
Be careful when you say "short meeting."
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, well, let's hope.
Be very, very careful.
Yeah, I may have jinxed us. So, right now, looking at the index, and I realize these are placeholders.
Yes.
That's it.
And this, and the idea really was, you know, a discussion tonight, if there's anything that the board would like to see additionally. So, it's some time for us to put together. At your next meeting, um, at the beginning of September, you'll get a full draft warrant review. And then your last meeting in September, you'll approve the warrant. So, yeah, they're placeholders at this point, just things that, um, have been in notes, items that I've heard from the board, and, and idea for us to dig in a little bit more as we prepare the warrant. So, the first one.
So, the CPC meeting, um, was postponed. They were unable. Do we know of a new date?
They have not, um, scheduled one yet. They are vigorously working to get that scheduled.
Get a date, okay.
We have this on as a placeholder, since there is the only one project before them.
Okay.
So, that's, that's why we have it on as a placeholder. It's not like they had multiple submissions this, um, this round. And then the appropriation of the Stabilization Fund is a typical, uh, finance article Gary and I have spoken about. The next is the appropriation to the Stabilization Fund for collective bargaining, uh, in non-union, particularly as we work through the reclass, we anticipate, um, an appropriation to that account. Our capital plan, that is, you know, one of the pillars of our fall town meeting. The tree bylaw is something that had been discussed initially in the spring, but, um, was pushed off to the fall, so council's reviewing that. We anticipate having that before you at your next meeting with the tree committee in. And then the last one was just, um, I've heard from various board members, the idea of,
Yep.
of some possible charter changes. So, I'll let you guys discuss that.
All right. So, on that, just so that the rest of the folks here are aware, we've been talking about, um, we have boards that are mem, uh, boards of three, that, um, one concern is the appearance of, um, open meeting law violations. So, when any two of them are together, it's a, um, they have the, uh, they're in a bit of a quandary. So, we had talked about expanding, um, these boards. And one option, too, would be to appoint alternates so that, um, if they do need to recuse themselves for any reason or are not available, that the work can continue. So, right now, as I went through the, um, the Board and Committee Handbook links, uh, the Board of Appeals has three individuals, um, but they also have others that serve as, um, alternates. That, that is a board, um, that we may want to look at. That is not a charter change. They are not under the law. Boards of assessors, uh, that is within the charter. They are also elected. Board of Appeals is appointed. I'm just giving you some information. Board of Health, also elected, also a three-member board. Board of Public Works, this is appointed, um, and it's a three-member board. Other boards, the South Coast Bikeway Alliance happens to be a three-member board.
That's because they can't get members.
So, that makes life a little bit tricky. And we have the Lincoln Park Group, which is the only other three-member board.
But that hasn't been called in such a long, big time.
And we got another, whole nother issue on Lincoln Park.
There's no need to.
The only other board, uh, which I found with a short, uh, a very short list, the Board of Registars of Voters, it's, there's two.
That's, but that's dictated by state law. You have to have a Republican, you have to have a Democrat, and you have to have a third alternative, which is basically unenrolled or independent.
Okay, so we actually need.
We can't touch that.
All right, but we, but we currently don't have a third. We only have two. So.
No, my understanding it's, uh.
Mary Ellen.
Yep. Randy Weeks. And then.
That was it. That's the only two names I saw.
Those are the Democrat and the Republican.
Yeah. Well, I don't know.
I'll check with Sarah. I thought there was a third.
Yeah, Sarah, that really is controlled with the town clerk, so.
Okay, so, that one, we don't have to, you know.
We can't touch that one by statute.
Right. But the others, I'm just letting you know where they are. We have other boards. Um, I'm, I'm mostly concerned with the boards that are three of the, the open meeting law violations and the inability to either, uh, get a quorum or, uh, have a, a, a deep discussion without having other, um, bodies available to them. I'm not looking at all the other boards. We have boards that have, like, ten and fifteen members and, you know, kinds of craziness. I'm just concerned when it's those three. Now, that being said, um, if this is on the town meeting warrant, if it's a charter change, then that would still have to go to the April 2026 election. If these boards and committees are not part of the charter, um, we may be able to expand them, uh, more quickly if they're appointed.
I, I, really, our main focus is the Board of Public Works.
Yes.
Increasing that from three members to five members. Um, the Board of Appeals, right now, has three members. If there's a member that cannot, uh, attend a meeting, then they have the alternates to come in, um, to serve, you know, at, at that particular meeting. So, they have the ability to, um, to function, um, versus not ha, meeting a quorum and not making the meeting. So, I, right now.
We've just had someone that stepped down.
Right, Mr. Gardner.
Right.
So, we need to reappoint, we need to.
But we have somebody that was misappointed by us.
Right.
They should have been appointed as an alternate. We appointed them to the board, so their board is intact.
But we, actually, we re, I think we redid that, correct? Did we re, um, examine that? It was Mr. Farrey, if I'm not mistaken?
He's the alternate.
Right, he's the alternate.
He's an alternate, but that's not who we put on. It was Mrs.
Alvin Human.
Human.
Who the board had recently appointed as.
Yeah, it's Human, Ch, uh, Human, Chuba and Mike.
Midas.
Those are the three members. So, there's, and, um, Dr. Agai, Mr. Farrey are the alternates. So, there has to be, also, if I'm not mistaken, there's a, there's room for a third alternate, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Gardner, is it you appointed as the, uh, the third alternate?
Okay, but Mr. Gardner just.
He resigned from a, um,
Permanent.
Permanent member.
And he has, so, so that's all set then.
So, you have a full.
All right, so that's all set then, so.
Uh, Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
I understand that, uh, there, there's a con- I understand that there's a concern of whether we should consider some change with this three members, and probably, we thought about, and you did, because we're looking at it, especially for the DPW. But between, get that done and do anything between now, now in-town meeting is probably going to be difficult and how necessary is it. On the other hand, maybe we can project it for spring town meeting, where we look at those members and say, well, and to talk with those boards, that do we need to have three, what's your opinion, which we do be, it's clearly the DPW stepped forward, that not only is the quorum issue or open meeting law issue, but they need two more experts to be in there, so that it's clearly an issue. And I would recommend that we just go ahead of that one, but make it a point over the next few months to investigate those others, because there may be a real need for it, but it's going to take a bit of a process.
Well, I think certainly if we, my biggest concern is the open meeting law violations.
Yep.
Because that's, anytime the two of them are together from the board, it becomes problematic.
Yep.
So I think looking at our three, the boards that are three, it's, we can certainly, we, we have the time, the issue really becomes in looking at the timing, to make any changes. Putting it on the warrant now means that we can put it on a ballot in April. Putting it on the warrant in June means we don't put it on a ballot until April of 2027.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a one or two that are really critical, then we can pull it forward, that's fine, but are there, in your view, I know the open meeting law's a consideration, but, I mean...
Well, there are boards that have had open meeting law violations.
Yep.
Public Works is certainly one that's most concerning.
What about Board of Assessors?
Assessors, Health, I don't, you can ask.
I understand the three-member board, but, you know, the, it becomes an open meeting violation if two of the members are at a social event and they discuss what's going on with the board.
Correct.
If the members are at a social event and they don't discuss any town business, then it's not an open meeting violation.
Correct.
There may be, somebody may have perceived them to have something, but the crux of it is if they haven't discussed town business, then it's not an open meeting violation.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's possible in the whole thing. And that still doesn't remove that happening if somebody's at a social event and four or five members are at, are at an event.
Yeah. Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, this, this came up with Charter Review last time, and we were waiting for the study to be done on DPW about changing this. And it really wasn't even about open meeting law violations, for me, anyway. It was more about being able to have board members on-site at particular parcels that are either being developed or looked at, to being developed, and their inability to even do that. So I would think, from what I've seen, and I've heard the comments from the DPW, the current board members, and the chairman, going back over the last year, I, I think it's imperative that we include this as soon as possible, from three to five for the DPW board. So I would, at a minimum, I would add that one, for sure.
Well, I just know when you're watching a meeting of a board of three, and someone has a question, and one of the members says, "We'll talk about that over coffee."
Yeah.
"We won't take the time now," I...
Yeah, it's a difficult position to put them in, you know, it really is. They really, you're kind of flying blind without, without having the extra, the extra bodies, and vacation, sick time, it's, it's difficult. And it's a very important board, you know, we've got to back those guys up.
Right. All right, well, we will, what I'm going to suggest, then, is it, Cody, if you wouldn't mind, asking these other...
Do you want to zero in on the three, four, the most important?
Assessor and Health, there's just, it's Board of Appeals, Assessor, Health, and Public Works that have three.
So this...
That are operating.
So the other three, we can have a conversation with.
Yeah, and just see if they want to be included.
Great.
And I understand with the South Coast Bike Way Alliance, they can't get five, but someday, if we say we're, they'll all be five, we'll be moving to five, and those three will be the quorum. All right.
While, while we're on it...
We're going to lose our slipper.
Slippers. While we're on it, I'm going to bring up the, one of the things that I had brought up in the past, Section 6-5 on the Charter, Rules and Regulations. I think this really needs to, we need to make a change here, because posting with the town clerk for that 10 days in order to enact a change to rule and regulation is, in 2025, I think is a little archaic, so.
So I sent an email back to Cody and Chris today, because the Charter changes have not been updated on the website, so they're going to work with Sarah to see, but that was part of our, gosh, what did we call, the omnibus? We had made some changes, talked about digital posting and that. So that should be, that should be taken care of.
It was sent to them, they just haven't uploaded it for some reason.
Yeah, and not even just about the time. I think it's, it's really about trying to get information out to the public about changes that are being proposed by the departments, department heads, boards, and giving, giving the stakeholders in the town a little bit more time to, number one, realize that these, these are potential changes, and then have a voice, be able to give them an opportunity either for a hearing or something like that, to come forward and, you know, be heard on some of the changes that can go through, versus just posting it for 10 days and then it becomes the bar of the land. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Talabom.
Were there any other issues from your work last year that would, would want to rise to the top and address now and for this meeting, or is it, I know you got that omnibus thing and some cleanup things, but...
I don't think there was anything else that we worked on that we, we felt we would die on the sword for.
Well, I mean, maybe for next meeting, if there's something that you would want to consider to add.
I'll look back, certainly, certainly.
Maybe there's one or two things, there's going to be time when this town meeting to address them.
Right.
We'll be out in 10 minutes.
Okay. All right. Town Administrator update.
So first thing, there was a recent water rescue at Round Hill, and just wanted to say kudos to all the lifeguards and staff down there. Lifeguard Hannah Fortin saw the distressed individual in the water and jumped in and made the rescue, and then several other lifeguards jumped in as well, including Andrew Fortin, Evan Doyan, Madeline Herkliczek, and Gabriela Souza. So kudos to them for jumping in and rescuing that person.
And did their work.
Yeah. On the positive note, I also want to recognize Dennis Dismaris, one of our building inspectors. As part of a camp inspections, annual camp inspections that we have to do in town, there was a faulty door that was found, and that would have, this camp would not have been able to open if this was not fixed. The superintendent of the camp was, you know, mulling over their options, and Dennis actually went out of his way and brought a whole door and door frame out of his own pocket and donated it to the camp, which allowed them to open up.
Wow, wonderful.
So, you know, kudo, again, these are the, I think, the great things that our staff does on a daily basis that we just don't really hear about, so it's important to recognize them.
No, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Again, on the kudos, we have kudos to our DPW. We were kind of given an unexpected bridge closure yesterday.
Yes.
And they worked hard to get that done, and that, that did open back up this afternoon. Let Selectman Tattelbaum get on to the long-range capital, but we have those workshops coming up. Our leadership team met with the team over at UMass Dartmouth to really look at how we can expand our town-gown relationship. So we had a very productive conversation with Chancellor Fuller, and I think there's a lot of exciting opportunities coming up that we can really look to involve the, our residents in and dive into the resources over at UMass. So stay tuned for some exciting opportunities there.
Excellent.
And then we also wanted to make sure our residents are aware that UMass move-in will be occurring, Labor Day weekend, with their classes beginning on 9/3. So if you see a little more traffic in the area, that is the reason why. And then last but not least, I've worked with the Council on Aging, and we will be hosting a Meet the Town Administrator Breakfast at the Council on Aging at September 17th, so I look forward to engaging with our seniors.
Thank you. That's exciting. All right, I noticed that we have a new, updated, proposed town projects list for us.
Yes, so this is really the first kind of go at this, and the idea is to get some feedback from the board. We talked about doing this monthly. What you can see here is, you know, the, the major projects ongoing, some basic information such as the developer, the type, whether it's a restaurant, you know, multifamily, single-family development, what it was formerly known as, so some of them, you know, could be existing, some of them may be, right, open space, whatever it may be. And then the status, so this status will change as we do this update monthly. There is not a ton of information here, just because we're still working through our departments to get the information in a digestible manner. So this was primarily done with zoning and planning, and so you see those updates there. And then we also want to make sure we include the permit number, so you can take this back, and if you want to follow the projects, you'll have that with permit numbers as well. So we're still working with Building to get the information from the Building Department, which is really, we're going to see it, you know, follow through after it's gone through the zoning and planning stage. But if there's feedback on how you, you know, think you could better digest this, or any recommendations, we're certainly open to it. And the idea would be to add, you know, Building to this under their status as well, so there may be some additional projects, and then also have their permit number there.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Old Business. Anything under those four categories?
The only thing is just a reminder that we do have the public hearing for the two proposed comprehensive permits, August 27th here at Town Hall. It's going to be in this room primarily, and we will have some overflow rooms set up for a potentially anticipated large crowd.
Okay.
And then while I'm on that, I do want to make note, I incorrectly stated that the CPC meeting had not been rescheduled. It has been rescheduled.
Oh, okay.
It is actually occurring tomorrow evening.
Oh, what time? Probably, I think it was...
6:30 PM.
6:30.
Yeah.
I will do my best.
I know I have a Zoom at 7:00, so that may be tricky. See what we can do.
6:30, right?
All right.
The other question was, do we want to keep on municipal broadband under, up to Old Business?
I don't know the status of it.
So this, I spoke with Peter Chase on this, and effectively, you know, they, they had gone through and done the study. It was going to be potentially cost prohibitive at this point, but the idea was there were two potential vendors that were going to be looking to provide service in town, which would create some competition, potentially, and that's really where things stood. If there were any updates, I can certainly update the board, or if you want to leave it on, you can, I just...
No, if, oh, Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, I would leave it on for, for one reason. It was, it was contacted by a law firm in Boston a couple of weeks ago, and representative of I-3 broadband, and I put them in touch with Kevin Estes. So I don't know what came of it. I haven't had a chance to talk to Kevin about how things went, but it was another country he heard from on, on this front, so, you know, we might want to just keep it on there and see if anything comes out of it.
Interesting.
All right. No minutes. Select Board updates. Anything, Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, let me see. Sue Cunningham and Cody were singled out on the DPW meeting, which some people probably don't see, they'll probably see this meeting before that one, for the help that they've given the DPW Union, or one of the Unions, to, to try and get some of those positions filled. And they said it was a, it was a breath of fresh air to be able to deal with, with Sue and Cody and try and get these, these positions filled, the information that they got back, the timing of them, and they, they were very happy with, with how the, those last few hires were handled. So throw that on your kudos list, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, well done. And then last thing for me is I, I keep hammering Mike Roderick's on, on water access for Far River, and I know you guys are working on it, but he mentioned to me as an aside, whatever you need, so.
We have reached out to the Westport Town Administrator to schedule a meeting.
This is great.
We're just trying to get our schedules aligned with our team.
Excellent. That's it.
Mr. McDonald?
I'm all set.
Mr. Mickelson?
I was going to mention the Paydnerum Bridge, the failure, unfortunately, some technical stuff. They have four jacks that hold the bridge together, and when it opens, the jacks move, stabilize the bridge, one of the jacks failed. So we always have an extra jack, because we've always had that same issue with jacks failing. The unfortunate thing is, the jack is bolted to the metal, and it's, as you know, salt water.
Yep.
So they had to, they had to saw the bolts off, and that was timely. They did have, again, they had the jack, and then they were able to put it together, so they put it together and they, and they pushed the button to, to open the bridge, and the motor failed. So they had to get a motor, a new motor, which they did, and they replaced it.
Today, yeah.
So, and it always happens on a, on a weekend, right?
Right, right.
Anyway, good job from the DPW.
Yes, very good.
Yeah.
Mr. Talabom?
Uh, let's see, I guess that's a good segue into long-range planning.
Yes.
First, I want to say that we, we met this morning. I would also like to make a quick, a quick comment on a comment that Cody made to me, to us last, last week at our meeting. And I said, "I know these are all important, can you get this done?" And Cody said, "Everything's important." It speaks of, I think, that the, he's off and running, and I congratulate you so far, it's going great, and thank you for what you've done for us so far. Cody? The meeting today, we are finalizing the, the plans for the, the three workshops. I think we're ready to go. The first workshop, I think you might put up on the screen, is September 9th, and it is at the COA, and these are on community projects. First and foremost is the COA Project Self, short-term and a little longer-term plans. Gets great support from the town, and it's going to, should be really interesting. And anybody wants to have anything to say about it, we're, we're game, we're going to give you details on what we know, and we, we're looking forward to questions and comments. It'll also include, our community projects include the, the stadium, the Paydnerum Bridge, and the Rec Center. And there'll be discussions and information we have. Some of these are more detailed, like the COA, others are more about the plan and what we want to go forward with. Then we go September 17th, the schools, Jim Colley's making that presentation, he's the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Jim and the school department have been incredibly cooperative and all-in on what we're doing here, because they recognize that we are, as Mr. Shea says at Dartmouth High School, we're, is it One Dartmouth, Ms. Brooks?
Yes, One Dartmouth.
And the school department's really working with us to make sure. We've asked them to do a lot of things that they weren't ready to do, which is project our needs down the road 20 and 30 years, and the main thing is this, this whole thing is written in somewhat in, in pencil, because we know that we have to be fluid with it as well. That will be at the middle school, September 17th, and the 25th of September, the last DPW projects, which is at the North Branch Library, which is really extensive. It goes on about our water, about our sewer, about our roads, on and on and on, and they'll make a presentation there. All these are going to be at 6:00 to 8:00 evening, three locations. We encourage as many people to come, and we also look forward to another series, once we get our legs under us and the reception we get and comments, because it's a, we're prepared to hear and discuss, it's a wide range of issues, and it's big. So thank you for the time, Ms. Brooks, and we look forward to seeing many people. I, I know we've said this before, we're going to be, we're going to be putting out electronic signs and notices, because we're doing our very best website to let people know what's going on. Cody's put together a great, a great barrage of ways we're going to contact the public, because we're really trying to engage. This is the first of, we hope to be a longstanding approach to how we, how we handle our long-term plans. So we encourage everyone to be out there and be there, and we're there to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. All right. Last but not least, just, I've been watching the, I guess, Storm Watch coming up this week, so just as a reminder to everyone, right now, it doesn't look like Hurricane Erin will be a hurricane. doesn't look like, uh, Hurricane Erin will be a hurricane problem for us, but certainly, um, a coastal issue with, uh, the, uh, waves, the tides, so for those of you that could be impacted, please be mindful of that, especially beachgoers. And second, before our next meeting, um, the schools will all be back in session, so we want to wish everyone a, a great, uh, end of the season of summer, although that continues, um, for a bit longer, but, uh, back to school, so time for bed, get on that clock, all of that, watch for the buses.
Little kitties.
Yeah, so, good luck to all of them. And that is it. One more.
One, one quick one. The, the grant, uh, Mass Grant, Mass Works Grant, I think we use for the police station, any update on that?
Uh, it's Crystal?
No.
No.
Uh, I will check with Chris. I know, um, Terry Hamm actually got us in touch with, um, someone who's done, uh, previous projects and learned of this, and we have reached out to him to see if he could provide us any insight. I know Chris did submit it, but I do not believe we've heard anything back, but I'll confirm and, and get back to the board.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Middleton, uh, Miss Mickelson, I did it. Am all in favor?
Aye.